Okay, I'm calling the order, Mrs. Robert Spanler.
Here.
Taryn Morgan, she indicated she wouldn't be making it, but that's still consistent. Gary Lenker.
Present.
Josh First.
Here.
Mary Gasey. Jonathan Bowser. John Kirchner.
Here.
Carter Wykoff. Joe Robinson. And Commissioner Mike Kreese.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum chairman.
Okay, and I'll make everyone know, we have a guest on tonight on this meeting also, Bill Speck is on also. Thank you for joining us. Yay. First one, the agenda is the reorganization for 2025. And.
Yes, yeah, what we usually do is then out as Mr. The Chairman opens it up, I will. Start the run immediately at this point. Just as in as an interim basis. The Chairman is Mr. Spanler now, Vice Chairman is Vice Chair is Taryn Morgan, the Secretary is Josh First and the Treasurer is Gary Lenker. This is the first year of their term, so to speak, but that doesn't mean that it can't be changed, of course, because it's on yearly by yearly, so. At that point, if it was, if we want to open it up for. Motions for nominations for each position, we can go ahead and do so.
I'm gonna nominate a slate, nominate Bob Spanler as Chairman. Myself as Vice Chairman. Taryn as Secretary. And. Help me Gary as Treasurer.
And I would second that motion. I know that in having some discussion. That Josh has been on the Planning Commission for, I believe, 12 years. And never served as Chairman and. I think that's appropriate that he serve as. Vice Chairman and ultimately Chairman.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, so we have one nomination in and second, do we have any more nominations? Okay, being there's no other nominations, Mr. Chairman, we'll have a vote, although in favor of the slate is presented by Josh. Mr. Spanler as a Chair, Josh First as Vice Chair, Tara Morgan as a Secretary and Gary Lenker as the Treasurer. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll run over the meeting to you.
Thank you. My pleasure to serve from the second year for this. And then we'll see Josh after that, that would be good, Josh, I didn't never knew, I knew you were on it for a long time and never. Been the Secretary just because I enjoy tormenting the staff so much. But Jerry is so good now, there's nothing left to torment him about.
It's a pleasure to do that, to have you. And don't worry, you can come back in and have fun if you want to.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have the minutes from the November 4th meeting that need approval. We have a motion to accept the November. I I will move that we approve them, I worked them out with Jerry and I thought they were accurate. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second, Mary Gasey.
Mary, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any names? Very none, motion approved, as we all know, there was no meeting in December. So, so just just lack of business, we didn't need one. And so we wanted a treasurer's report. You see, there is. This money in, money out, looks like what, $3,736.10. We have a motion to accept the treasurer's report to move that money.
Person makes a motion to transfer both November, December funds.
Thank you, John, do I have a second?
No move, Mary Gasey.
Mary got that as a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. That. That was.
We both had.
Was that both of them?
Mr. Kirchner took both.
Okay, sorry. Reports from the officers.
Well, I was thinking, Mr. Chairman, if you want to.
Let's do.
You wanted, we have a, there's kind of a dual purpose here, we. We could skip that and go to the Chairman or go to our guest.
Yes.
Also to Communications, I'll set it up about Communications. In November, we received a communication from Representative from from McNeese Wallace, from from Mr. Speck. Indicating which the Dauphin County Planning Commission was copied, there was two, two, two correspondences. The one was sent to you in your packet today, and if you had a chance to review it, it's certainly right here, kind of scrolling through it very quickly. But also there was one where the item was sent to Millersburg and then also we were copied on a letter to. Upper Paxton Township as well. As you know, the related to this, Mr. Speck's been in front of us before, talking about some of the issues he's had. With Tanner's Run and his operations building. This was brought to our attention primarily in addition because of the construction of the. The high school or the elementary school at the high school at Millersburg, as you know, Millersburg does not have a. Subdivision of land development, they follow the county's rules, so we were involved with reviewing that part. Mr. Speck in his letter had indicated some concerns about how that was. Terms of reviewed and some of the other things with how it was constructed, so. At that point, that's how we're here, that's how it was brought forward, and then Mr. Speck is here, if he would like to. Elaborate on anything that's going on, I know Mr. Priest had some comments to us individually before the meeting. About some things, the Commissioners are also talking about this project, so. Spec, if you'd like to talk.
Thank you, actually, it wasn't my intention today, but thank you all for your service to the county, appreciate it, it's like old home week a little bit. I also, years ago, I used to serve with all of you, so good to see you all. I think the thing that's probably. Most on my mind is, I think that I haven't, I've not seen any movement. From the county at this point, or the two municipalities. And I just think it's important that maybe we we get together as a group. If anyone knows our facility, we have security cameras throughout our whole building and outside. So we have a lot of this that we have on video and and pictures. We also have of the school district that was added, by the way, I supported. That addition, but. I think the main concern that I have is in 1996, Brinjack did a study. On Tanner's Run that was ailing back in 96 with the recommendations that they had. And that needed to be looked at, corrected and so forth. There was a grant, I don't remember who it was with, there was a section on Seal Street in the borough that. Of Tanner's Run that actually caved or fell in. Again, a lot of that infrastructure on Tanner's Run is like that now, actually, there's a portion that begins in the township, ends in the township. There's a portion in the township. That has caved in, that happens to be on private property, but it still is infrastructure supporting both municipalities. I'm looking to be able to maybe sit down with whoever you recommend as a team, someone from or people from the borough of the township. A lot of them haven't even viewed or understood the problems, certainly only one person so far from the county. From the Conservation District, when they visited the school with DEP. Actually looked at some of the video stream and some of, no pun intended on the video stream, but. I, if you knew my heart in this whole thing, I just want to work together with the county, with the local municipalities. I know that Senator Rothman is interested in it, as well as Senator Kerwin. I'd like to pull the team together with the Commissioners and start to look at a viable solution to this. I know the Borough currently is having another study done of Tanner's Run, which I appreciate, needs to be fairly current to make it shovel ready. But honestly, the last thing we need to do is keep doing more studies, we need to start correcting the challenges that are there and that are impacting. Not only our our business location, but other areas within in the the two municipalities, so. With that said, that was what I'm really looking to do. So I was a little grieved when I looked at the Planning Commission meeting agenda and I again didn't see anything on here involving Tanner's Run, so. I have reached out to each Commissioner, would like to get those meetings together. And again, be able to, I don't know, educate, it doesn't need to be them, it could certainly be a representative. But I would like to get this project in consideration and start working on funding to. To get it solved, so thank you for the time, I appreciate everyone's effort, and again, I appreciate all you serving the county as you do.
Bill, I have a question, Josh here. What hands-on, from your, from your seat there, you're in the catbird seat, you're looking out. What hands-on corrective measures need to be taken, what dirt needs to be moved, is there a swale that needs to be put in, is there a. A catchment basin that needs to be put in, but what what concrete steps can we help you get implemented out there?
Yeah, I think, you know, again. Jerry would be familiar with this a little bit as well, because I think HRG at one point with the county, he took a look at this.
Yes.
When the school was looking to. Do the addition or build a new school there. One of the concerns was, again, the amount of water runoff. They were looking to potentially put that into Seal Park. At the time, they weren't able to meet the deadlines. HRG came up with an excellent plan of, there is a natural swale in the park of really unusable. Land, and they were looking to put like an earth swale, if you will, to do some retention there. Again, the main reason for doing that, from what I understand, and Jerry, you can elaborate on this. Was to help take some of the pressure off an already. Debilitated system, so cave-ins and things would hopefully be at a minimum. And then they would be able to segment this Tanner's Run that runs through the, you know, the township, the borough, then the township again. And start to address areas as funding and finances were available. That project didn't get done because, one, it didn't get funded, two. The school district, I believe, had like a million and a half dollars, don't quote me too exact. Of some grant money themselves that had to be spent within a certain timeframe. Unfortunately. When they did the evaluation of Tanner's Run upstream, there was an area that could be considered, it wasn't for sure. A small area of wetlands. And the permitting process through the state wouldn't have allowed the school district to use that. To potentially resolve their issue, so they had to go to a sports field and put an under underground retention. Area in there, again, I think that one of the challenges that we're having is that was all done and approved, the school district did what they were told to do. To a 20-year or 25-year was the normal requirement. But again, looking back at that Brinjack study that was done in 96, they recommended to the borough that there would be. No further growth within the Tanner's Run watershed, which is less than 100 acre area. Or if there was going to be growth, there would be done at the 100-year. So the school, the school put in what they were told to do, and that doesn't meet what the recommendation was. From the the Borough Engineer, which has complicated things, obviously. I know that some of this, that swell we talked about, would certainly help, Josh. But ultimately, the entire project needs to be looked at.
Bill, I just need a clarification here. If I understand you correctly, DEP would not approve the permit because there would be water going into a wetland.
No, no.
No.
But the problem was, as Bill indicated.
That's what I heard him say.
Well, no, yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't exactly that way, what happened was is.
Because it wouldn't surprise me.
No, but it wasn't that way.
Oh, it wasn't that egregious.
No, no, what happened was is whenever the analysis was being done to go and put that. Detention area within Seal Park, it was basically building a dam and having a walkway across it and everything and holding back the water. There was a timeframe in order to get everything done that the school district had to do in terms of they, like Bill said, they had some money that had to be. Spent within this period of time. The study was done, and then whenever the wetlands came up, it was like. Oh, there's too many wetlands here, if we went and we have to go and do permits and everything associated with that, that's kind of pushing back further in timeframe. It's not the DEP said that we can't do it, they didn't even look at it. HRG advised that it was gonna take a lot longer than it would.
Even, is there any expedited permitting process?
Well, we didn't even, we didn't even go because the school district at that point didn't want to take any chances, they they wanted.
They spent the money on something else.
Well, what they decided to do is.
The underground thing he's talking about.
Correct, what they're responsible for is only the additional stormwater that they're creating. And not necessarily all of it that's coming through their site.
Yeah, but they're obviously having more of an effect, Bill's underwater.
That's, that's, you know, that's part of the question of whether or not it was built right, whether or not it was inspected correctly, I think those are some of the issues that was.
Whether it was calculated right.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think.
I mean, if Bill's underwater, something isn't working right here.
Right, and that's, and that's what the problem, that's what a lot of things, it's a complicated situation. And then going, going back to that question about everything else, we. After that was all decided and everything put together, then we worked with HRG and the rep program, which Millersburg was part of. And we built a, we put a grant together, we did some of the design further, further deep in the, you know, the question of the. Permit, what needed to be done. In essence, the county through the rep program, as Millersburg's part of it, put together some of the analysis of that.
Excellent, and where were we with that?
Well, we applied for a grant and didn't get it.
Oh.
So the the data is still out there, the information's still out there, it's now, it's just how do you come up with the money to build that? Not whether that's, again, as Bill just indicated, that will solve some of the, that'll give him some of the relief, but it's not, it's, there's beyond that, there's, there's issues. In Upper Paxton Township with an issue with the, some, some of the development coming straight down into a pipe. There's below there where there's collapsing infrastructure and an old culvert that was done, that's undermining a. A apartment complex, I mean, there's, there's a number of things that are happening in this whole area that that's Bill was indicating, you know. Should take a bigger look at the whole thing now.
Is the Borough prepared to handle this? I know that's kind of a loaded question, but it seems like.
Well, Josh, I have to interrupt, it's not just the Borough, it's Upper Paxton Township, I mean, I will tell you, I'm a. Resident, I grew up in Millersburg, this is a complicated situation here with Tanner's Run, it's not just. The impact of the Millersburg School Edition. You have a development known as Lizai Development that is borders both the Borough. And the township is in both municipalities north that that is affecting this also. The township needs to get involved in this, and that's why I'm happy Commissioner Priest is on, I really think. And no disrespect to to the leadership of Upper Paxton Township, but the the Tom Schafer's and the old guard. That led that municipality are no longer there, you have a new group, and I just think they're, they don't understand and they're not being given proper guidance and information. And Jerry, you chime in on that, but you know, I, I think that somebody, as Bill is suggesting and requesting. You know, there needs to be some leadership here to bring the parties together, the Borough, the Township, and the school district if needed. And 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 try to deal with this.
Yeah, and in fairness to the school district, the school district put in what they were told to put in. And they've met that requirement, it just doesn't, it ju- just doesn't coordinate. With the recommendations by the engineer that did the study in 96. That the system wasn't capable without going to the 100-year, which was missed.
So what, how do we, Jerry, look, you're the professional planner here, and this is complicated, obviously. What do we do to help, it's not just Bill, Bill, Bill's the canary in the coal mine, the canary in the coal mine is drowning and we don't want it to drown. And Bill's back, arc safety is an indication that there's something much, there's a problem that's looming, it's gonna, it is affecting a lot of other people, what do we do? This is like a, this is a classic job for the county planning people, what do we do with this, and how can we help you?
Yeah, I could tell you how we were trying to approach it and how we'll have to try approach it again, the Water Resources Enhancement Program rep was, was the perfect.
Yeah, that's great.
To get them involved, and in fact, that's what with Millersburg, we, they jumped in with the whole idea of this Tanner's Run being an opportunity to do that. Upper Paxton did not. But regardless of that, there are means for cooperation, we can work together, I, I work a lot, try to get the Upper Dauphin Cog involved in things. They're, they're kind of a vehicle to work together. There, there are people out there, it's just a matter of bringing all the, all the, all the people into an agreement form and getting them to to kind of go into it. I, I, I think in essence, the real thing I see is it's, it's gonna cost money. And it's a question of. How do we come up with the resources to do that, I think that's the biggest, I think if we found the money to do a lot of these things. Both Upper Paxton and Millersburg would would come and do that, you know, come to the. Table to try and fix this, I think it's, it's just that it's a lot of it's, who's gonna pay and who's, you know, how do you work?
It also sounds like there's a permitting hiccup or potential hiccup with the wetland.
I think we can get by that, to be honest, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I saw the wetland report and I saw it and I thought, you know, this is not a major wetland issue. It's just, it just takes so long, that was what that one.
I mean, if, if I were to hear that a state agency was objecting to a wetland being flooded.
Yeah.
I swear to God, I mean, I don't, I'd do something radical, because it just, it's just. We've had change recently in the leadership in this country precisely because of these kinds of issues.
I really don't think going back that that was the issue.
Okay, all right, well, so how, how can we help? You're, we need to do some fundraising, basically.
Well, I, I think what we can do is, again, under the leadership perhaps of the Planning Commission, or however we decide to do the vehicle. Or through the Commissioners, that we can, you know, kind of start a little summit type of thing, or kind of get them together, find, find the. You know, try and invite them maybe perhaps back through rep again, you know.
I think we should, Jared, because it sounds like if the Borough's on board and you're on board. And Upper Paxton's not on board, it sounds like that's a big part of this, if we have, if they're approving development up in there that's having this. Impact on the watershed and people who are downstream, then they gotta be brought in.
Well, and that's, and that's something, you know, again, we could, we could sit down with them and say, how do we go about doing it, and then figuring out what the. The mechanism is around behind that.
All right, Jerry, can we get a commitment from you that this is something that you will elevate? That we, or or that we will revisit again in in some.
Well, I, I tell you, if you pass a motion to have authorized staff on behalf of the county to work forward.
I so move to authorize the Dauphin County Planning Commission. To take the leadership role on resolving this Tanner's Run issue with all of the parties, not just the Borough, not just the school. But Upper Paxton Township as well, and anybody else that is believed to be a necessary partner resolving.
Conservation District.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, even PennDOT's actually involved, or will be involved as well.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Gary.
There's a second on that, I have a question.
Sure.
So, is there something more, more information on this from Mike? From Commissioner Priest? I mean, are they doing anything, an email came out.
Yeah, I sent an email today to the, to the Board advising that I had received a voicemail from Mr. Speck today. And that I had connected him with Vince Pease, our Chief of Staff. I then got a call from one of my colleagues, Commissioner Douglas, advised me that he has also been reached out to, and I believe. Vincent said he believes Commissioner Hartwick as well, so all three Commissioners are aware, this topic actually was brought to my attention and Commissioner Hartwick's attention. Last year by Mr. Lenker, so we are aware of this, but we have not engaged. Pretty much in any way, shape or form, to my knowledge, but we are looking to gather more information and fully participate in finding a solution.
I just didn't know if there was more information before we took a vote.
I have no further information.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
We have a motion and a second. That we, the Planning Commission at least tried to gather all the parties together and take charge of this, if if that's what, if that's what it takes to fill. To to finish this thing, because Bill, if I'm, let me ask you one question, we talk about this, the rain. So every time when we, you hear like, oh, it's gonna rain two inches or three inches, does that, is that when you get scared, I mean, is that. The water that it takes to create this, or?
Yeah.
It's that little bit of water is what I'm asking, I guess.
To be honest with you, this, this is normally. You know, like a Agnes type flooding, doesn't affect, doesn't really overly affect Tanner's Run. It's usually a thunderstorm, a supercell storm that comes in and dumps two and a half. Inches of water in, in an hour and 20 minutes.
Right, that have issues, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking for sooner than later, because, I mean, it's nothing anymore to get two and a half inches of rain, it seems like, you know. Especially in Upper County more than down here, you know. Okay, so we have that motion and a second, need to vote on that, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any names?
Let the record show, it was unanimous vote to support.
Thank you all for your time and thank you for allowing me to go early in the agenda, and again, I, I thank you all, look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, Jerry, did you get all that?
Uh, well, I'm glad we're recording.
Don't worry, Jerry, I won't let you forget. Weren't you taking notes?
Yeah.
Okay, in order to keep the meeting moving here. The next would be any reports, reports from officers. I have none, none, anyone, any other officers have a report?
None.
Okay, communication and staff reports.
Well, the communication I indicated before with Mr. Specks, there are also two, just to make you aware. There was a, one additional communication. We received from. This is my, so many things going on here, technically. The correspondence, see. West Hannover Township has adopted a change to their zoning ordinance. We did not review it because they had taken all of our comments and made the changes as we suggested, so therefore it was needed to be, so that was done. In November, so just for the record. Uh, just for the record, uh, West Hanover has a modified zoning ordinance.
That was quite a process too.
Yes, it was. Uh, and one of the main thing that we told them about was we did not like their parking calculations and they went back and did what we suggested. So just again, that's, other than Mr. Specks correspondence, that was the only communication.
Uh, the program progress report, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be real quick on that, uh.
Nope.
Uh, it was included in your packet, um, again, I won't go over too much like, uh, the rest of the, uh, uh. My colleagues typically do, but I do want to, a couple of things. One is next year, there's a Greenway and Trails Summit. Uh, conference coming here. We've been, uh, active in helping prepare for that. Also, next year, the American Planning Association Conference is here in October, so we're also on the board for that. Um, the Silver Ride Home Program, uh, Steve has talked about that in the past, Andrew's talked about in the past. That is. Uh, it's been getting a lot of press and from what I understand has been off to a good start. Uh, the Active Transportation Plan has been, uh, finalized and, uh, that will allow, uh. More communities to try and seek funding or, uh, mobility projects, sidewalks and the walkway such, so. Um, also too, uh, as, uh, as something that is going on with the. Stormwater, uh, there's two projects that we're working with. We've talked a lot about rep and I'm gonna give a very quick brief update on that just for. Uh, administrative purposes at the end, but also there's the CAP program, that's the, uh, County Wide Action Plan, which, uh, is dealing with water quality. Uh, we have been very successful working for, with four different counties, Tuniata, Mifflin. Uh, Perry and Dauphin, and we have gotten quite a bit of money. Uh, Dauphin County alone is, uh. Is, uh, gonna be announcing that we're gonna get one point three million dollars for projects coming up, so. Um, if the project up in Millersburg was a water quality, not a flooding one, then we would, uh, you know, that would have been. Perfect to, to go, but it's, again, uh, Premier Project Awards, uh, we're gonna be doing that now, starting. We're gonna be putting together all the projects that we've kind of, uh, been tracking for the last year or so. And then probably in the next two months, we'll be giving you, uh, projects to, to look at, to consider for a formal, um, um.
Jerry, sorry to interrupt you, but so that I make sure I understand what you're saying. So you're not soliciting projects, you are the staff or?
Well, what we're doing, we were tracking all the projects that we know through social media and through our, uh, the intergovernmental projects. And then if there's anybody who does have anything like, uh, working through our LPAs, it's, uh, some projects that the local municipalities have had going on. If they give us the information from their engineer or something like that, we're putting together a database. So if there's anybody who knows any projects that they think that was done in the last year that is considered to be a good project. Please send that to us. Uh, and then once we get those lists of projects together. Uh, we're thinking maybe ten or a dozen, we're going to reach out to those, uh, people. And ask them to give us more detailed information so that you guys can, uh, select and choose which ones you wanna give an award to.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Okay, um. The, um. Uh, for Tri-County itself, one of the major things that happens every five years, I believe, is the planning certification. Uh, with the Federal Highway Association, uh, Federal Highway, that's a big deal to make sure that we're, we're still doing what we're supposed to do. And that's starting now, so those in the transportation part of our office are freaking out, so.
That's a professional term.
Yeah, they're, they're quite concerned and they're busy with that. How's that? And, uh, we had some other meetings with, uh, uh, Hummels Town Borough has a new manager and we've been talking with them about. Uh, making sure that they stay within cap and anything else that's going on. So, those are the main highlights. If there's anything that you saw whenever you read through the two, two months, uh, progress reports, then certainly, uh, you know.
I'll, I'll just say, Jerry, it's, I, I say this frequently, it's just, I'm amazed at how much territory you guys do cover. You got, you guys cover a lot. I appreciate it, that's all.
One additional question, uh, Jerry, you mentioned the American Planet Association Conference in Harrisburg. Is that? Something that we would be availed to attending?
Oh, yes.
Commission members?
Yeah, I have to, I don't know sure exactly how that'll work in terms of being a subsidiary member or type of thing, but. Uh, I can certainly look into that. Uh, what, what we, what Andrew and I are on the, um. On the, uh, coordinating committee for presentations, so, uh, uh, you know, one of the things is typically if you. We can get you person on a planning commission as a speaker, it's pretty cheap in terms of registering, so. Uh, maybe if there's a topic or two that you're interested in and you wanna talk about, let us know. We can certainly figure out how to slide you in there.
I think affordable housing should be at the top of the list.
Well, they, you know, we have a meeting, uh, next Thursday, uh, with, uh, with the, um, uh, with. The whole committee, whatever, putting it together and, and they haven't selected a theme yet, but, uh, I will say, I mean, one of the things that was in the. The, the American Planning Association, and I think I said it before, had that all day, uh, discussion or, uh, seminar on affordable housing. Here at the, at the Giant, not the Linglestown, but the Camp Hill Giant, that was.
Yes, remember you saying that.
That was, that was quite well done. So I know that the planning commission, the planning profession is very, um, you know. Excited about that and plus with the new housing, uh, and the change of, of administrations at the federal level. I think everyone's gonna be interested to see how that changes as well.
What's the date of that conference? Do you have that handy or?
Uh, I do not have it, but it's.
Get that to us.
First week in October, I believe.
Okay, thank you. We, I'm sure you'll get that out.
I would like to piggyback off of Gary's kind of broad, uh. And I won't, I'm not gonna take too much time when people are busy, but affordable housing is something that's like. It's as big as this room, it's as big as this bill. I mean, it, people talk about affordable housing, you hear about it all the time and I've, I've cracked some jokes about it and stuff, you know. There's one particular thing that could be done a lot, that would alleviate. A lot of housing issues and help a lot of families with existing development, and that's ancillary structures. Gary, ancillary structures, like a, like a, like a mother-in-law addition. Ever talk about that with it?
Accessory dwelling units.
Well, thank, thank you for the, the nomenclature correction, Gary. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. I will always nomenclaturely correct you.
Yeah, if you wanna call it the cool way, it's called granny flats as well.
Granny flats, even back, I just, we just hit that right back to you, Gary. Granny flats, yeah.
Uh, yes, actually, if you take a look at our model ordinance for, uh, things like that, we, we promote those kind of things. Having a multiple, uh, within single family dwelling districts so that you have multiple, uh, type of, uh. Housing opportunities of, you know, uh, building above a garage being allowed and type of things. Those, those, uh, type of, uh, provisions are certainly something that I know a lot of people are trying to push forward to.
Okay.
Uh, it's a lot of the, the resistance again is at the local level. Because it, it's changing things and they think it's changing the dynamics of their community. Uh, even though something as simple as something like that, that is, is, as we're all, as we're all facing. Uh, aging population and our parents and everything like that, it, it makes sense. Or even having children. Who are looking at, uh, having a space within the space so they can get their feet on.
But I, but I think that's a part of this commission's duty is to educate those municipalities. Not strong on them, but educate them to, to, to understand because there are many. Still, uh, you know, not in my backyard advocates of all areas of housing. But I think that's really important for us to do.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I would just say, I mean, green space and develop, green space development's a big, big boogie, man. I mean. People get all, they get wound up about, you know, John Kersher's projects or whatever. I mean, did they see a farm and they're like, oh my God, I can't believe, well, if you would allow people to have a granny flat. Or in a, you know, or nomenclature me correctly again, but the, the, the ancillary structure. You know, that takes the pressure off the green space. So, I mean, pe- people have to be educated to understand that there are trade-offs in life. Right? We all face trade-offs. And if they don't want the green space to get eaten up so fast and they have to allow the. Development to go back to where the infrastructure already exists. That's just an educational thing. I, I know, I'm, I'm off, I'm off my soapbox, Gary. Back to you.
Well, we enjoy being on that soapbox. It's just a matter of if we can get people to listen to it.
Right, right, okay, thank you, thank you.
But again, we, we did the thing with, we do have a, on our toolkit, we have a little thing about it. Uh, we did approach as much as we can at one point. We're talking about calling it not affordable housing because that comes with some sort of, uh, stigma as well. Uh, we called it, uh, attainable housing, workforce housing, things like that that would, uh, kind of demystify it. Kind of make it a little bit more of a, uh, acceptable from a nomenclature type of, like granny flats.
Or a green space saving.
Yeah, or, you know.
Save some farmland, put, put a flat.
Yeah.
Good point, Jerry.
That's we can get a T-shirt there.
Yeah, thank you. Alrighty, moving on. Thank you, Jerry, for all that, a lot, a lot of good information there. Um, the local planning assistance, uh, report, uh, you can see, uh, November was kind of busy. Put twenty-four hours out on the street that, uh, off sites, uh. At the townships and, uh, boroughs, uh, December looked like a little slow. I guess everyone's on. Getting ready for Christmas. That was only eight hours, but twenty-four hours in eight hours over the last two months is a lot of time out there. And I, uh, commend our staff for spending those evenings out there.
Yeah, thank you, Jerry.
You know, yes. Um, uh, there are no committees, uh, at this time, so. Skip over that there. A new business. In front of us are fourteen plans. Um, Jerry, I didn't, was, I didn't see anything that was really big on there, uh. Say you looked at it.
Uh, there's, there's a couple, uh, housing.
Middle Paxton Township, isn't that what's that size? Phase three.
Quite a few that are substantial.
Yeah, unfortunately, we had some problems with the.
With the solar farms.
Yeah, you wanna go down, yeah, down a little bit down. You wanna, you wanna move the map down, Jerry?
This way?
Yeah, yeah. Keep going a little bit more. Now, now you're a little bit more. That's good, right there. There you go. Now you're, you're hard at Middle Paxton.
Yeah, I don't see one in Middle Paxton this time around. I don't remember.
I did not see a plan for Middle Paxton.
I stand corrected then. I thought I did.
There's a lot up there. There's Lykan Township.
There's a planning module later for Middle Paxton, but.
Yeah, there is.
Um, that's, thank you, John. I messed up there, forgive me. I knew there was something going on.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a bit of plan out there. A lot of them are, are, uh, you know, again, there's, there're different timeframes for. Uh, for the last two months.
Does anyone have any questions on those fourteen plans?
So, Mr. Chairman, I have no questions, but I have to, for the record, the Plan Twenty Twenty Five dash ten, I have to recuse from it's. Aren't my company's project, so I won't vote on that one.
Okay. John? Twenty Twenty Five dash ten.
Yeah, it's the last one on the list under West Hanover.
Oh, yep, yep, the West Hanover Township Run?
Yep.
Okay. We have noted that, Jerry, that.
Yep, I do.
Okay, so if there's no questions on those fourteen plans, we'll entertain a motion. To accept them, Jerry, unless there was something that stuck out to you?
There's twelve and fourteen. There's the two months. There is, uh, uh, one month, uh, November was twelve.
Oh, okay, yes, yes.
December was fourteen.
Fourteen, I'm sorry. We'll do them together. Kerschner's abstaining from his.
And Mr. Kersner's abstain- abstaining from Twenty Five Ten.
Right. Yes, so there are twelve for November and fourteen for December. Um, it's a lot of plans. Anything to call your eye, Jerry, that you think, no?
No, I mean, there, there's some. Uh, no, nothing, nothing huge, huge like.
Yeah, I didn't see.
Jerry, question for you. From a historical perspective, uh, prior commissioners, have they voted on, on these matters or do they abstain?
Uh, the commissioners have, have said, yes, they, they voted on it, so.
Thank you.
Or voted whatever way they wanted to go, correct? I guess they.
Okay, so we have all those plans in front of us. Uh, that's a total of twenty-six plans then for the last, for the two months. We have a motion to accept those, to accept the staff comments on those plans. So move. And Mary Gasky seconded that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any names? And we do have one abstention to the. Twenty, was that Twenty Five Ten, correct?
Yes.
Twenty Twenty Five Ten.
Yeah, right, just as a kind of reminder too, for planning mission purposes. Uh, the, uh, under the, uh, this probably planning code, all these plans are reviewed and approved by the local municipalities. Under the, the MPC, the county has the right to make comments. Those comments are, are provided by staff and then. We, you have a copy of the chance to look at them. And then if you have any additional comments, you can certainly bring them up and then, then we transmit that information. But in order to get the comments in time for the thirty days, you've kind of given the staff the, the responsibility of making the comments on behalf of them. And you're just, you're ratifying.
We're ratifying just.
Correct, so you're not approving, you're just adding your two cents, which is allowed.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, zoning amendments.
Okay, let me get back.
Second, folks, or get Jerry, get back to that.
Sorry, it's, I'm driving slowly today. It's the weather. Okay, um, this is, uh, the Middletown Borough has, uh, um. Proposed a change to their zoning ordinance. Uh, they're changing sign, uh, provisions. Um, and in general, they're looking at, uh, taking a lot of the, the ideas of the political signs, uh, and also. Easing the process of, uh, having signs, uh, approved. Uh, we reviewed it. We didn't have any real issues with it. However, we did note, as you can see a little bit below here. That we wanted to make sure that there was, you know, First Amendment provisions are not being, uh, uh. Being infringed upon so that they make sure that they, they're okay with that with the solicitor. Uh, also too, there is a little bit of clarifications, we think, in terms of the permitting. Uh, make sure that they understand what they're giving the cert permit for and what they're not giving. But in essence, the, uh, the, the ordinance is a good one. It, it clarifies a number of things and therefore we're recommending they adopt it with, uh, those couple. Items in mind.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. We have a motion, uh, to, uh, accept the M- Middletown Borough's, uh. Zoning ordinance, staff recommended.
Kersner so moves. Kirchner, so moves.
Thank you, John. Do I have a second?
Second, Gary.
By Gary Lanker, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, let's move on to uh the subdivision land development.
Okay, this one was.
One there.
Yeah, this one, uh, it's. This is a modification to their, it's kind of extensive modification that Halifax Township is doing. Uh, to their Sado. Uh, if you noticed in the packet that I gave you, I have a. Uh, connection to where you can go and take a look at the whole thing rather than giving you the whole. Ordinance itself. But uh, in essence, uh. We uh, we just have a couple of words of caution to make sure that. There's a little bit of discrepancy on how they define land development. Make sure it's clear and concise uh. With the MPC, make sure that there's no issues with that because everything has to be aligned with the MPC. So we're, you know, we're not gonna add language, but just make sure because it's a little bit different. Uh, and there are also too, they have some, some confusing things that we thought with when it comes to to flag lots. Uh, there is some confusion with how they uh having sewage information on it, so. Uh, we're, we're a us. Think it's great that they're looking to update their ordinances, try to clear some things up, but the those two items, we just. Just kind of, kind of not, not red flag, but yellow flag to make sure that they're okay with that.
Well, and that's, that's what you're here for, Jerry.
Well, you know.
Yeah, thank you for that cover letter and those items uh to the municipality. Was there any changes? On. Subdivision uh sizes for uh. Lots serviced by public water and sewer. Was there anything that dramatic?
There was one, uh, if I remember correctly, I think they went down a little bit in size to allow a little bit better because they had. A fairly large requirement. I think they went down, but.
Fifteen thousand square feet had been their public water and sewer.
I think I, I I can look it up, but I, you know, Gary, I think they did go down. I think it's, I think they went down to six.
That's, that's substantial.
But I'm not, so don't, I I don't have it all memorized.
Okay, so they went down from fifteen.
Well, I think they did. I'm pretty sure they did. Don't quote me, but I'm pretty sure whenever I looked at that, because one of the things we look at is. Again, you know, talking about affordable housing, you know, how's it affected?
Right, that there, that's it right there, I see. Not everybody can afford, you know, a four acre lot.
Yeah. So. Uh. So again, if if it would have raised to something that we thought was a true concern, we certainly would have raised that.
Okay.
But again, I can't give you the details on that unless you want me to to look into it a little bit here again.
Any other questions on that?
No, I'll go back and look at it. Thank you.
Certainly. Uh, we have a motion to uh accept the. Uh. Halifax recommendations for uh staff recommendations and approval for the house, for the Sado. I'll make that a motion, right?
Kirchner seconds.
John, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you. Intergovernmental reviews.
Okay.
Governmental.
Um, yeah, these uh, you know, uh, we don't really share the letters with them, but I'll give you the uh, kind of the. A quick uh overview of each one of them here.
That would be great.
Uh, Lower Paxton Township is seeking uh highway money for Prince Street, House Streets, uh road safety improvement. They're looking at getting uh. Uh, money from uh the multimodal transportation fund. Uh, their grant amount that they're seeking is one point three million, of which three hundred ninety two thousand they're providing as a match. Uh, again, it's, it's uh. This intersection has been a high area with accidents and they're looking at improvements and I can give you the details. If anybody's interested. Uh, Sussex County Township, Wedgewood Park, Wedgewood Hills Park is looking for a statewide uh local share grant, the D C D grant. Uh, to make a general improvements to it. Uh, a million dollars is what they're asking for. They're looking to put another million of their own money up. Uh, that's to be done in phases one and two, uh blocking trails and the improved the bike structures. Uh, Detwiler Park entrance facilities. Like this is the county uh application. Which uh they're looking at uh improving uh the intersections uh into the park. Uh, they're looking from. D C D grant from the Finance Authority Local Share Count. They're looking for three seventy one, three hundred seventy one thousand dollars. In order to uh make the improvements of access and accessibility to the site. The Swetara Exchange, we've seen this one before. That's with all the the redevelopment of the mall down there. Uh. They're looking for as much money as they can possibly get, so.
That was like the most honest state.
Yeah, they is.
History of government.
It's just, uh, it's, you know, actually, it's funny.
Any they can get.
It was an open ended one. Um. Lichens Borough, Lichens Borough, actually, it's not a letter being written, but it's just a notification that they're. They uh, for their Borough Authority, uh has to go through a permit renewal process and they're looking to renew their permit for the. For the, for the authority for waters. Uh, or water, believe, whatever, I don't have it here, but that's. The next one again is a uh Lower Paxton Union Deposit Report Improvement. Uh, that's a similar one. They've been looking at doing some things for improvement of pedestrian safety and. Uh, improving the corridor. They're asking for one one million dollars there. And then the last one is a, and within si- within the city, but it's a private uh entity. That's asking for some money. They're looking for uh improving a former church located within the city. Uh, they're looking to uh make it a meeting space, a functional space. Uh, and they're asking D C D for. One million six hundred thousand dollars to that uh site. Yeah, it's a. As a private entity, so.
But it's like the Swer Exchange one that we've been doing.
Exactly, yes. Anybody can ask.
Yeah.
And the what we do is we evaluate them based upon our overall goals of the of the. Proving the community. It's very rare that we say no, unless we think it's detrimental to something for other projects, but. Um, it, we're, we're supportive of all of them, or we find them consistent with our goals. We don't really necessarily say support.
Right, right. Okay, do we have a motion for the in intergovernmental reviews, all seven of them?
So move.
Mary, by Mary, we have a motion made by Mary, you second?
Kirchner seconds.
Thank you, John. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Hearing none, motion carries. We will send those letters as. Support.
Well.
Letters of consistency.
Yes.
It's the, it's the, the, the. Non, it's, it's the uh support non.
Right, yes.
Right.
Yes.
Um. Yeah, and uh, again, if there's any additional comments you'd like to make on those, we can carry that both of you on.
Okay. Sewer modules, seven of those.
Yeah, I guess the, I'm not sure if you want to go over each one of these again, too. The couple of first two are uh. Individual, small one lot subdivisions. There is the one that was mentioned before. In uh Middle Paxton, three eleven Spruce Lane or Speece, Speece Lane.
Yeah.
Uh, that one is a large one. It's a uh. It's. It's for townhouses.
There's another one that's the town.
Oh, right, okay, that's it. That's not Speece Lane. That one's just a three lot one. Uh, the other one is, I'm sorry. It's the towns at Stony, Stony Creek. It's uh. It consists of a hundred and fourteen townhouse units and a clubhouse. Hundred and sixteen total EDUs. Uh. Along Stony Creek Road.
I don't see that on my agenda. I just see Chestnut Hill subdivision, phase three.
If you take a look at there, the last one there.
Oh, Lower Paxton.
No, Middle Paxton.
Middle Paxton.
Stony Creek.
It's not on my, I'm sorry, it's not on my agenda.
Yeah, it's the sewer module number seven. I can pull that up if you want.
My sewer modules only go to five on my agenda.
Oh, that must have been the last. That was the pre one?
Okay.
So the.
The follow up.
On Friday, yeah.
But don't run into ten, run, right?
So. But we want, you know, whenever the uh land development application comes through, then. Then we will have an opportunity to make comments on it, because they're putting it. Not necessarily. You know.
Motion through the sewer modules as presented.
Okay, there's a motion to accept all seven sewer modules. With the.
All seconds.
Comments and get. And John Kirchner's second, I'm sorry.
You call.
Not first.
You can give John the credit.
He'll, he'll take it.
Hard, Josh.
Looked up and saw me there.
John and I work in tandem.
Wait, go. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Hearing none, motions carried. Uh, that is, leaves us with just the rep program update.
Yeah, I I don't want to go into too detailed type of thing. I do want to say that if uh anybody is interested to any of the meetings. But uh, we do have, uh, you know, we do have been doing something. Uh, it's a. We run in cycles, so this is a second year uh of the uh rep program and at that point, we're gonna have to figure out. Uh, how to to readjust what we're looking to do. Uh, right now, there's two municipalities, uh. Henbrook and South Hanover who have uh decided were on the fence type of thing. We gave them the opportunity. Think about it for an extra year. Uh, early indications that they may both drop out. Uh. I'm not sure why. One of the main things that ended up happening that kind of threw our program into a mix was D E P didn't announce what the new M S four. Permit requirements are gonna be. Uh, they said the permit requirements for now are going to stay the same, so a lot of these communities that. Would be joining potentially rep have a program already in place. And a lot of what their appeal was is to be uh in in advance of anything that might be happening, so. So we're still moving forward with those eight municipalities that have joined. That's mainly in the Swetara Creek watershed. Uh, assisting them with uh what we. Their M S four, their educational programs. We did do a, an analysis uh of potential new. Sites for projects. None of them were large type of thing. A lot of them are mainly flooding, uh. Investigations.
Absolutely, issue there.
Well, it is, it is quite a bit, so. So I just want to kind of say that we've been moving forward. We've been putting together some uh reports. We've been pulling together some. Educational things and we've been doing some other type of. Of work on that is required under our agreement and with the work plan that was approved by the Planning Commission and the county uh last year. One of the major changes that we are, are looking to do in kind of as a more of a synergy type of thing. Our cap program, the county program, is giving a lot of money. And uh, like I said, we got one point three million dollars. And we'd like to kind of funnel that into uh projects that we see or people are working together. And of which the rep program is certainly that way.
Right, yeah.
So uh, we're developing a the site, a project selection program in order to. Start to, you know, like with these communities working together, um, for spending that money. Um. D E P has been very, very pleased how we've been working the cap program. Um, we got probably the second highest amount in the state next to Lancaster County. This last time around, so.
And that's like ground zero for water problems, runoff. Pollution and sediment, they got it all down there.
And we're, we're very. We're very happy how this cap.
I'll, I'll tell you, that's interesting. The statistician in me says that the fact that Dauphin County qualified.
Well.
For all that tells me that you're, you guys here in the planning commission. Are way out ahead of the issues before they're happened. Lancaster's running around.
Yeah.
Playing whack a mole, trying to clean up all their problems that have just been boiling over for twenty five years.
Well, and it's not just us, it's four counties. And what really makes it well for D E P is that they can go to. They've seen how we've worked together. And uh, it started out with the Conawoga Creek project. In that uh. These, the money through the cap program is for shovel ready projects. And a lot of money not out there is uh for, you know, like the Tanner's Run Project. We had a plan put together which we may end up having with what H R G did.
Right.
They politicians like to see ribbon cuttings. Ribbon cuttings turn around fast. And they like to see their money happen.
They will see it in their terms, not in next term.
And so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so one of the things with this cap program that has been good is that it's, it is a short turnaround time and then if you have. Four counties working together. And say the one project isn't going to be ready for this time period, we've been able to ship, shift money over to that. Particularly like the Conawoga Creek. Those other three counties weren't ready to spend the money, so we took it all. And then uh, there is another project of Mifflin that we weren't ready to spend the money that we gave them. Uh, for a golf court, golf course uh rehab. So we've been able, and D E P loves seeing that. They love seeing successes. I mean, love seeing the flexibility of. Of having this agreement, so, so we've been getting more money because of.
Well, there's nothing like implementation. I mean, that's the thing, you know, seeing the rubber meet the rug and actually seeing. Public money gets spent in a way that works for the public. I mean, it's, you know.
And, and that's really, and that's, and I think again, uh going back to a concept of. Uh. You know, what uh, what we're doing here with the the cap and everything is that so. See my screensaver there. The uh.
Yeah, Jerry, there's certain things that we just don't want to know about. You're an angle's territory.
I know, he's, he's, actually, he's my wife's favorite guy, so, even though he's a Notre Dame guy. But uh, but anyway, one of the things that we're end up doing is. Um. We uh, we're very fortunate with that and one of the, one of the major kind of things that we're changing with the, a little bit with the rep is. Combining those two things together, so I didn't want you to be surprised if somebody comes and says, hey, this cat bunny is, you know, whatever. And not have some at least understanding what I'm talking about.
No, that makes perfect sense. It's exciting, actually.
Yeah, so we're, 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 we're very happy that we've been getting a lot of money. Uh, we're very happy with the, being able to uh spend it in a proper way and uh. Uh, and, and again, the. Going back to the refs, having these, it's a lot of cat herding. Uh, to get these communities to work together and I, I would say, if you asked me if I. I think we've got an A plus, I'd say no, I'd, I think we've got probably. Got a C plus. Because it's hard to bring these people.
I'm just gonna say, Jerry, I sit on a regional board, okay? That, that, all these counties here in central Pennsylvania. And I watched county after county have a train wreck on the rep issue. So I give you guys an A plus.
Okay.
I mean, they had townships that, that turned over their leadership on this issue. Your county was a disaster on this. They, I mean, it became a countywide issue. Which, if you remember, I rode you and Steve Deck pretty hard on our meeting minutes for years about this to make it clear. It was not a county issue. This is a federal issue and we are simply responding the best that we can to the federal mandate. And you guys have done A plus work, man, I'm telling you, A plus, because I've seen. A bunch of other counties not deal with this at all. And, and it's not for lack of trying, it's very, very difficult to do.
Well, and it's uh. And there's, there's more work to be done and uh. I think at the end of this last, next year, we have to show to the municipalities that we've saved them money. Uh, we have to uh give them reports and, and we hopefully, we, whenever it's all said and done, we can show that to them and meet all the. Because there's a lot of intrepidation for, for them entering, they did. Because there's a lot of intrepidation for, for them entering, they did, and they put a lot of requirements on us to show things. And so hopefully we can show it in some manner and hopefully they think it's all worth it. I, I, going back to the Tanner's Run thing and everything else is, money. Gets things to the table and gets things done, and then we can find the money, that's why another emphasis we're making is. Uh, for these municipalities is finding them money. Uh, using seed money to maybe do these design projects.
Right. Well, on that point, and then I have one other thing to just comment on, but to that point. You have the Senator. Rothman, you have the Representative Kerwin, and you have the attention of the three commissioners, if they can't assist in finding this money, I don't know who can.
Well, and, you know, and that's, that's gonna be too, I mean, the Dauphin County has the, the luxury or the, the, the fortunate of having the, um. The gaming grant, and so that's. Um.
I just want to share, we, we, we did get some great press over the holiday season, uh. You know, through the regional planning commission's effort on the Uber driving to, to, for people drinking and driving. I thought that was great, in fact, it was nice to see they had. I guess some old footage of Steve chatting on that topic, but, uh. You know, kudos.
Goes away.
Ku- kudos ultimately to Dauphin County, because we, you guys led that, that was, that was, we got some, I hope, other saw that, it was some. Channel eight had it covered, and I believe channel. Twenty one, I believe.
Yeah, and I, I think, uh, and that, that's one of the goals of us working in Tri-County is trying to work together. And maybe that's some of our skill set, but hopefully we can get, uh. A lot of these projects and portable housing and, and transportation. And the water quality that we can hopefully.
Yeah, yeah, after listening to all this, Gary, you, you, it, it, um. Josh, it's, it's just getting the people to hear it, know it, then understand it, I think. You know, there's so many people out there that just don't understand what this is.
Well, and they, they also, there's, there's been some understandable grassroots. Resistance to being financially put on the hook. For something that came out of the federal government, that's called unfunded mandates, and people hate it.
Yeah.
And if you present it as. A top down thing, people in, you know, East Suckittash Township go crazy. And they vote out their township supervisors, then it goes up to the county, get rid of the county commissioners. But if you do what our staff have done so well, which is, hey, we, we, we gotta find a way, and I know this is painful, it's not. Your fault, you know, we're not doing this to you on purpose, you, they've done a great job, Jerry and Steve, and now Andy. But just of threading that needle, that's a, it's very, I give you guys A plus, don't, don't knock yourself.
Well, thank you. But, uh, we're, 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 uh, but I did want to give you an update, if, if there's anybody who's interested in. Uh, meeting and coming to our meetings and everything else, uh, just certainly let me know and we can. Always have you, and if, if anybody wants to, we do have an, I see, sure, priests stepped out, but. Uh, we do have a meeting set up with them to go over, uh. Uh, a rap, a little bit more detail, uh, because, uh, they do, uh. You know, the funding from rep comes from a couple different locations, we have been very successful. So far, I'm getting grants, we got an emergency forty one thousand dollars, an emergency management grant, we got thirty three thousand dollars from a. Uh. Uh, from, uh, uh, from a gaming grant, uh, we got, uh, uh, another. Thirty two thousand dollar grant. D E P, I can't remember exactly. But we've been trying to seek money to get our administration money, plus then we have all the fortunate, uh, money from, uh, the Conawoga Creek, uh, projects. And then now we're pulling all the cap money into, uh, or not all of it, but I can. Share of the cap. To work that too, so. Uh. It's, yeah. Money is the key.
Yeah, sounds like.
Hate to be kind of the.
Yeah, I spent all afternoon waiting to hear Jerry say, it's all about the money.
About the money.
All in this.
Unfortunately.
Amen to that.
Yeah. Does anyone have anything else before we adjourn? Uh, next meeting is, uh, Monday, February third. Um. See everyone there, so we have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Thank you, Mary. Josh seconded that, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody. Take care.
This is John, bye guys.
Good meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry, I know that you were scrambling.